Mayor of Malden, Gary Christensen.
You don't even need me here with these students. Let's give them a big round of applause, taking time out to be here tonight. Again, I'm Gary Christensen, Mayor of the City of Malden, and I want to welcome you here this evening to Malden Senior Center. Before I begin, I really want to especially thank our Human Services Director Karen Hayes for being here tonight and making this space available. And then, of course, I also want to recognize Malden Access Television, who is here tonight, making sure that they bring this to the community. So, thank you, Malden Access Television. So, people have asked me, you know, why tonight? Why here? Why now? And I think back to just a couple of hours ago, where the Malden District Court held their first-ever Cultural Appreciation Day. Fantastic event. It was headlined by the Malden High School Coral Arts Society. We had the Immigrant Learning Center there, as well as the Chinese Culture Connection. But as I was there, I kept thinking, we continue to celebrate? We continue to appreciate? It's now time to take the next step. And I think that's what is happening here tonight. And so, I just wanted to really thank the Chinese Culture Connection, the Mass Senior Action Council, and the Greater Malden Asian American Community Coalition for organizing tonight's event. To give you another angle of why this is so important tonight, we recently had the Asian American Real Estate Association here in Malden. And so, I had prepared a big segment around crime and what was occurring in our community. And so, as we rolled out the presentation, the Asian American Real Estate Association stopped me midstream. And they said, listen, we appreciate you putting together these statistics and what's happening with different crimes, but in our point of view, it's all about the schools. And so, that's why tonight is important. And I want to really, you know, say thank you to the candidates. I have found, in my 20 years, there is nothing like putting your name before your peers. It deserves a lot of work, a lot of dedication. And I think before we begin, they all deserve a round of applause. And just the last thing, how lucky are we tonight to have someone come here in the stature that she holds across this state? And that's Lisa Wong, the former mayor of Fitchburg. So, earlier, I was fortunate enough to be able to hand over the microphone at the Cultural Appreciation Day to the Malden High School Coral Arts Society. And once again, I'm lucky tonight because I now hand it back to the students of Malden High School.
Welcome, everyone, to the City of Malden's School Committee Candidates Forum. My name is Esma Asusi, and I am a ninth grader at Malden High School. This forum is brought to you by a number of community organizations, including Greater Malden Asian American Community Coalition, Chinese Culture Connection, Massachusetts Senior Action Council, Chinese Progressive Association, and APIs Can. We are community-based organizations who work together on, among other things, civic engagement issues. Before we begin, Lilly Lor of the Mass Senior Action Council will speak briefly about bilingual ballots. This is the first time that the City of Malden will be using them.
Thank you. Thank you for introducing me. Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. And I see our city clerk is here as well. Greatly appreciate that. And we have some flyers out there. But this will be the first year in Malden that we will have bilingual ballots, both in Chinese and English with the instructions. So, I wanted to give an announcement on that. A lot of people might not know that that is happening. But it is a very historical step for Malden and a great way of expanding the democracy in this city to all residents, regardless of what language that they speak or read. And we really want to make sure that we get high voter turnout this year. A lot of activists and community organizations in the past have fought for Malden and for, you know, our democracy in the states to be more inclusive. And so, it is now our responsibility to vote and to be part of their legacy. So, I made up some flyers, and you can see them in the front. They are both in English and Chinese in the back. And I'm hopeful that some of the students and parents and residents of Malden can bring that out into the neighborhoods and make sure that everybody knows that this is happening and encourage their family members and their friends to go out and vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. I would like to acknowledge the following officials who have joined us tonight: Former school committee member Adam Welldie and candidate for counselor-at-large, Stephen Winslow.
Hi, my name is Ohila, and I'm a ninth grader at Malden High. The organizers would like to thank the following for their support of tonight's event: Shengai Ravioli for supplying the great food, Melody Sang, staff of the Malden Senior Center, Department of Public Facilities, MATV, and all the other volunteers that made this event come. The following school committee candidates are participating in tonight's forum: Ward one, Michael Drummy; Ward two, Emmanuel Marsh; Ward three, Mecca Smith; Ward three, Jennifer Spatafora; Ward five, Tara Murphy Beardsley; Ward six, Colleen Leon; Ward seven, Catherine Bordenaro; and Ward seven, Nicole Masalem.
Hello, my name is Jayliee Spicave, and I am a sixth grader at the Ferryway School. We are honored to have as our moderator Ms. Lisa Wong. Ms. Lisa Wong is the Deputy Director for the Asian American Civic Association, an organization that helps immigrants, limited English speakers, and economically disadvantaged individuals and families become self-sufficient. She is a senior fellow at the Governing Institute and an adjunct professor at Clark University. She has served four terms as the mayor of the City of Fitchburg. Mayor Wong has received recognition for her work on a broad range of issues, including conservation, urban education, public health, and anti-poverty initiatives. Mayor Wong has previously served as the Executive Director for the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority and as the Executive Director for the Women's Institute of Housing and Economic Development. She has a dual bachelor's degree in economics and international relations and a master of arts in economics from Boston University. Thank you, Mayor Wong. We will now pass the proceedings on to you.
I think we should conclude the evening right there. What do you think? Well, thank you for that wonderful introduction. And let me first just say that it is my honor to be here. And I want to thank the students for setting the bar so high. It just makes all of your jobs just that more difficult. So, but I do really believe that the poise, the intelligence, the grace that you've shown tonight is really a testament to the work of the mayor, the school committee, the teachers, the parents, the entire community. So, thank you to the community for the wonderful work that you're doing. Thank you for caring about the schools and having a forum like this. So, let me go over some ground rules for tonight. So, we have two parts of the evening. The first part is going to be introductions, where these wonderful candidates are going to be introducing themselves and their platform. The second part, we are going to have members of the committee ask questions, questions that have been compiled from actually a number of you. So, thank you for your input tonight. So, the first part is going to be approximately five minutes long. And I want to thank our timekeepers in front. I will assist them if I need to, but I think you all know how to follow the rules. So, we are going to first begin the introductions with Mr. Drumly. And then, when we begin the question-and-answer period, we are going to rotate. We'll begin on this side as well. So, starting the introductions is going to be Michael Drumly.
Hi, good evening. I'm the current Ward one school committee person. My name is Michael Drummy. I'm just finishing my first term. It's been an interesting two years. I ran basically because of the fact that nobody was running, and that's kind of sad. So, again, it's something that I think you should do, and you young kids here, as you get older, you'll see. It's not bad running for office. It's kind of fun. You get to, you know, people make fun of you, but that's okay. It's a good thing. It really is. But the kids need representation. It's the parents that vote for us, but it's the children that need the help. So, we try to make sure that things are carried on in a proper way, guide the money through the right process. And it works out kind of good. And you get a sense of fulfillment at the end of it. I don't have anybody running against me. Whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but I can... There are some races here tonight. And paying attention to some of these folks, you can feel the passion that they have. And everyone, I know I've met all of these folks. And it really is a good thing. It really is. So, that's it for me for my five minutes. I really don't need it. So, I'll turn it back over to you, Lisa.
Next, we have Mr. Marsh.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And so, my name is Emmanuel Marsh. I am the candidate seeking for reelection for Ward two. Just a little bit about myself. I am a lifelong Ward two resident, first-generation American. My family came from Haiti. Actually, they just celebrated, I believe, their 49th year in this country last week. So, I went through all the public school systems. Started off at the Glenwood for preschool. Went to the old Emerson School, first through sixth grade, excuse me, through the new middle schools when they first opened up. The old middle school, which is at the high school, which for eighth grade. And then, I graduated from Malden High in the class of 2005. Went on to college. And, you know, a few years ago, I had a tragic life experience that led me to running here. You know, the life experience that I had made me want to get involved with this community because when I decided to have children who want to be a part of this community, that at least I was a stakeholder and I had something to do with this. And so, the platform that I ran on two years ago was social-emotional learning. And as I sit before you, and I'm proud to look at everybody in this audience and say that we're working with the previous superintendent, that we actually found a social-emotional curriculum that's being implemented right now as we speak. I would say that this was crucial. I remember when I was growing up and going through the school district, there were certain things that I wish, you know, I could talk about at home. But I was afraid because, growing up with only just a single mother, there were some issues as a young man that I was a little embarrassed to bring up to my mother. But, you know, we got, I obviously got through it. But I wanted to bring a social-emotional environment to the school system to allow students who may have felt in that situation or who actually, who may not even have a support system at home to actually have that kind of support system in the school system, I should say, between their educators and the administrators and their peers. So, I ran on that, and I was elected to serve, to represent Ward two or Edgeworth. And that's why I'm out here seeking reelection again, because I believe in it, and the schools are our backbones. And this is a great community. And again, I want to have children, and I want to put them through the school community. So, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mecca Smith. I am a candidate for the Ward three seat. And one of the highlights for me, as I've been involved in this campaign, has been really meeting all my neighbors and having some pretty fascinating conversations. It's just been really wonderful that people have opened their homes and enabled me to share more about myself and what I stand for. And it's also made me think a lot about conversations that I've had with my students because I'm a former teacher. And I've really been thinking a lot about a student named Theana, who I taught in my first year. She was a second grader. She was so shy and nervous and really felt very unsure of herself, which is burst into tears whenever I give her an assignment. So, I taught her this little mantra called "never give up." Super simple. I would just raise up three fingers each time I saw her getting really anxious in class. And that was like our little signal to know that she could do it, she could persevere, et cetera. And I'll never forget when I was like halfway through the school year, she came to me with an assignment she'd been working on, and she just started crying. And I said, "I'm trying to comfort her. It's okay." And she's like, "No, I'm just so proud of myself. I didn't give up. I finished. I did it." And it was just a really beautiful moment. And so, I think a lot about that story because I feel like this whole campaign for me is like my "never give up" campaign. And I'm excited to live out some of the mantras that I've taught my students and to now make them proud because Theana is actually in high school. Something else that I've been driven by a lot are my values around education and justice. So, my father, when he was in high school, was actually one of the first Black students to integrate his school in Louisville, Kentucky with his sister. So, I grew up hearing a lot of stories about how he and his sister would literally sit in class, and the white teachers would not teach them at all. They just refused because racism was such a huge thing back then. So, he really taught me the importance of making sure that I'd never let anybody take my education away from me, that I did everything I could to make sure I got the education that I deserved and that I really believed in it. And that's what inspired me to get into education, to start teaching, to really dedicate my life and my career to this. I've been in education for over 10 years, and I will continue to do so. Some of the things that have really, I'm really proud of in terms of being here in Malden is I've actually been a resident for five years. So, I've been on the newer side. But I've really been interested in making sure that all of our students are learning and performing at the right level. So, we have a lot of students here who are English-language learners, a lot of students who have diverse learning needs. But they're not all performing at the same level. So, I'm really interested in being a part of those conversations and those solutions. In addition, we all know that Malden is incredibly diverse. That is a shining star and a shining point of our city and our school district. However, as we look around at our diverse students and our diverse families, often our staff and even our school committee doesn't reflect that. And I think it's a really important conversation for us to continue and actually build some plans around how we're going to make sure that we're addressing that. And then, the last thing that I'm feeling very conscious of is making sure that we're having conversations around just some performance gaps between different groups of students because we have some kids who are excelling, yet we have other students who are not able to receive the same services. And I think that we have to, if we're going to live up to our ideals, talk about that in a very comprehensive way. Thank you very much.
Ms. Spatafora?
Good evening, and thank you for having all of us here. And a special thank you to all the students that have taken their time out to be here and be a part of the process as well because everyone that's sitting up here is here for you, for your benefit. So, I am a 30-plus-year resident of Malden. I attended Malden Public Schools. My kids attend Malden Public Schools. So, tonight, I'm going to speak to you as a parent that has decided to run for this position. I have three children that are in the system, or were in the system. I do have a recent Malden High School graduate that's now in boot camp for the U.S. Coast Guard. And she got the best possible education from Malden High School. She was an honor student, advanced placement classes. She really put the effort into her education. My middle child, Gino, is the type of child that just kind of flies through school. Doesn't really need to put as much work, and it just really comes naturally to him. And we're lucky for that. It makes homework time really easy for us as parents. But then, came along my youngest son. And two years ago, he was diagnosed autistic. And it was a bit of a blessing because now we had, we had an answer to why he wasn't succeeding in school. It wasn't necessarily the school. It was just he wasn't being taught to his standards. And at that point, I decided to dedicate my time, my effort, into advocating for special education, special needs, children with disabilities, neurotypical, and also English second-language learners, anybody that just doesn't have the ability to walk right into a classroom and start learning right off the bat. And I'm lucky to say that our experience in Malden Public Schools has been phenomenal. I've sat in on countless IEP meetings. We have met with everybody from school committee to BCBA's, occupational therapists, and everybody has only wanted the best. And I've come to realize that my story isn't necessarily everybody else's story. There are people that need a voice. There are people that need advocates to stand up for them. There are people that just don't know the right routes to take. However, there are people like myself that want to do that for them. They need a voice for their kids to be able to just get the education that they're afforded. And that's why I'm here today, as a parent, but more so just as a compassionate human being that wants to see everybody succeed. So, thank you.
Ms. Beardsley?
Good evening. I'm Tara Murphy Beardsley, and I'm the current Ward five school committee member. I'm also running unopposed. But I feel like this is such a great opportunity to be able to talk about what we see as Malden and the future of Malden education, even though there's not someone running against me. That's not something I'm thinking about. I'd like to be thinking progressively. So, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a public school graduate as well. I grew up in Manchester, New Hampshire, similar to Malden, except for the diversity. And that's what I really love about Malden. My three kids are in the public schools, at the Linden, and as well, my son just started their Early Learning Center last Tuesday. And I've also had an excellent experience with my kids in the public schools. There's been bumps, and there's been things that I've gone in and talked to teachers about. But I feel like we've always worked together and found a solution. I feel like one of the things that I've been on the school committee is responsive to people, transparent, proactive, and listening to all sides of issues, which I feel like is a really, really big issue right now, that we need to listen to each other and listen to all points of views. I've worked really hard on trying to rehire the K-8 librarians. Hasn't happened yet, but hopefully, in the future, this will happen. But we got volunteers together last year, and at least two of the libraries that I worked with got books out to the kids and got kids in the libraries, which was really encouraging. I just, one of the big things that I talk to people about is it's not what's wrong with Malden Public Schools. It's not what's wrong with the achievement gap. It's not what do we need to do better? One of the biggest things is funding, just bottom-line funding. So, the biggest issue facing Malden and has been facing Malden is budget issues. And so, one of my commitments is to try to advocate for Malden for the funding formula, which is not working for us right now, just Chapter 70, and Circuit Breaker, which is a special education reimbursement. I just want all the students to be served equitably. And it's very frustrating to know that there's money out there, and we're not getting what we deserve. I also wanted to talk about just equity across the K-8 schools. It shouldn't depend on where you live as to what you are, what you get access to in a school. Every kid in Malden should be able to get the same thing. And I feel like that's really important. And then transparency in school committee and Malden Public Schools. We need to get more, like events like this. We need to get out into the public. We need to be talking to people. We need to listen to people. You know, Facebook pages, email newsletters. I've thought of all of those things. And there's many other issues I'd love to talk to people about. Very passionate about STEM education, physical activity, social, emotional. I mean, I could list them. But I just wanted to thank everyone for contacting me always and for giving me a chance to serve.
Ms. Leon?
Hi, my name is Colleen Leon. I'm running unopposed for the Ward six school committee seat. I'm a lifelong Malden resident. I'm also the daughter of an educator. So, I grew up knowing the importance of a good education, no matter where you go to school. A good education is key. There is no public school in my ward, and I think that that's okay. It gives me the opportunity to be an advocate for more students and parents across the city, regardless of where they attend or where parents choose to send their child to school. We have to keep a good education in mind. And I want to be that advocate for the students as well as the parents in any issues that come up. I think that a good school system is important for any community. I've always believed in smaller class sizes. I ran two years ago, and that was my biggest platform. And unfortunately, that is still an issue, and it's becoming more and more of an issue. So, I'm hoping to learn a lot as a member of the school committee so that I can really get out there and try to tackle some of these big issues. And the biggest, in my opinion, being the class sizes within the city. So, I look forward to working with everybody, and thank you so much for having me.
Ms. Bordenaro?
Thank you very much, and thank you all for having us. I'm very grateful to be here with all of you tonight. One of the, before I get started and talk to you a little bit why I'm running and some of my issues and my concerns. Although I am not a parent of a child in the Malden Public Schools, but I do have seven very important children in my life, as well as all the other children in Malden, that gave me the inspiration and the motivation to help other children. And I'm very grateful. They happen to be my nieces and my nephew. I am the Ward seven school committee representative. This is my first term. I'm also a product of the Malden Public Schools and a graduate from Malden High of 2002. I received my BA in Criminal Justice from Salem State University and received my law degree from Massachusetts School of Law. I knew not too long ago, after receiving my law degree, that I wanted to give back to the very same community that paved the path for me in my life. The same educators that helped me navigate are still friends of mine today, as well as mentors. I knew that I wanted to ultimately make a major impact they had on me to others, thus, the reason I chose to run for the school committee seat. Many mentors of mine knew I could be best serving elsewhere, but there is no place I'd rather devote my time and energy to none other than our future that reside here in our amazing city. The past two years have been life-changing. I have seen all different forms of cultures, religions, and ethnicities, and it has been nothing short of amazing. I am constantly learning. I've learned there are going to be agreements, conflicts, mistakes. But that we too can learn from and develop into a stronger working community. I've devoted a lot of my time to the new founding program of mine called Families Against Drugs. It is held together by an expanding group of parents and guardians that are concerned about the opioid epidemic that has swept the world. Educating our community on making healthy choices and facilitating the education learned at FAD to their children will help them make a healthy living and ultimately, a healthy and well-balanced life. Hence, my advocacy for more health teachers in a drug and alcohol awareness curriculum. While it's important to make healthy decisions, we must not ever forget mental health issues and the social-emotional well-being of our children. Furthermore, I strongly believe, in order to maintain a safe learning environment, that we must act strongly against bullying. Bullies take more to social media. I recently did a presentation at the Teen Center in Malden on ways you can help prevent a bullying situation. It is very, very real, and no matter how old you are, it almost will never, ever go away. It's about knowing how to react thoughtfully, not just off emotion. And we can teach our children that. We really can. Lastly, there is a need of a topic that should receive just as much attention as the others I mentioned, and that is families of domestic violence. Domestic violence is an issue that is rising amongst families across the state. And I will advocate, as a school committee member, for more counselors and programs that can assist in creating a negative and unhealthy situation into a more positive one. At-home living will always affect your classroom studies. It takes a village, and I will be that voice for them. Thank you so much, and I look forward, and I'd be honored to serve as your next school committee representative for Ward seven.
Now Ms. Masalim.
Hi, everyone. First, I want to thank the organizers for putting all of this together, and most especially to all of you. Because without the demand for something like this, we wouldn't be here. And it's been amazing to see all the voters here in Malden, all the citizens become reinvigorated in the political process and in their city. So thank you, all of you. So my name's Nicole Masalim, and I am somewhat of a newer member to the Malden family. We've been living here for about five years now. And I have had and started raising two of my three children here. My oldest goes to the Linden Steam Academy, and we've had wonderful experiences with that school. But a little more about my background and how I feel that it can help enhance the experience here in Malden. I come from a family that was low-income, working-class, and we struggled. It was difficult. And I am a survivor. I'm a fighter. And the way that I did that was my mom made sure that no matter how many hours she worked, at the end of the day, she came in and she sat down and helped me with my homework. And today, we know by many studies that parent involvement is the one key factor that regardless of income, regardless of cultural background, or any other indicator, is the number-one influence for the success of a child. And it was because of education that I was able to get out of the situation that I was in, to break the cycle of poverty and of crime. And I really am very passionate about being able to help other families and other children break that cycle. It's not easy, and those of us who have made it need to reach back and make sure that we are that stepping stone for them to climb. So basically, here's what I propose for Malden. We are one of the most diverse communities in the entire Commonwealth. Our high school is the most diverse high school in the entire Commonwealth and the fifth-most in the nation. And with all of that, with all of these different minorities that we have, we need to do some community building. We need to start bridging that gap and get everybody together to celebrate their differences, and most importantly, to celebrate what we have in common. Pride in our school, pride in our cities, pride in the community that we're all building together. We also live in an area that is amazing in its opportunities. We've got Harvard, we've got MIT, we have Google headquarters. We have all of these biotech and research companies here. These are all resources and relationships that we could be building, especially encouraging parents to get involved. Secondly, we need to start looking at the learning process in a new and innovative way. We need to make sure that we are cultivating enthusiastic lifelong learners, because it's no longer enough just to get a degree and stop learning. We constantly need to be learning. We constantly need to be improving ourselves and making sure that we have the skills to succeed, from preschool all the way up to retirement. And lastly, I would say that we need to make sure that our communities and our children have the resources that they need to succeed. And that is something that, you know, is key right now. Our communities are being starved with funds. Our children are being put last on the list. We can no longer allow that to happen. When a child can go to school and not receive a school lunch, but just a plain cheese sandwich because their family can't afford to buy them food, there's something wrong. And we need to look at ourselves and fix that. So thank you, all of you, and I hope we can do this together. I hope I can have the privilege of earning your vote, which I will work hard for every single day.
So I would like to join the candidates in thanking the audience, whether you're here or at home. Through Google surveys and in talking with community members, a very important list of questions have been developed. So important that we've invited your peers to come and ask those questions to the candidates. So I would first like to invite up a recent graduate of the Malden Public Schools, Maya, who will be asking the first question. The question will be directed to Ms. Masalim, and then will continue in this direction, and you will have one minute each to respond.
What is the role of schools in teaching children about topics such as cyber safety, wellness, health, bullying, and drug and alcohol abuse?
Well, schools are, you know, the best learning environment for our children, and it's important that they're given the skills that they need. So there's quite a bit in that question, actually. But when it comes to drugs and alcohol use, we can't raise our children in a bubble. They need to be aware of it, and they need to have a supportive community, which is why I am a big supporter of the 40 Developmental Assets Program that's being put forward by Malden's Promise. As well as, you know, cyber bullying, we need to make sure that our children are aware that their words have consequences. We've seen the results of that in the last election. You know, people feel that they can say more online than they would say to their neighbors face-to-face. So this is important. Our schools have a role, and we need to make sure that they're doing it.
Thank you. So we currently have a bullying policy in our schools, and we want to make sure that we're providing a safe and non-disruptive learning environment for our children. And one of the things that can help facilitate that is just making sure that we're, you know, we're educating our children on how to handle the bullying situation. As far as the drugs and alcohol go, you know, I'll just, you know, talk a little bit more about my FAD program that I have once a month, and I rotate them throughout the schools. And what that does is we educate the parents on ways that they can communicate to their child about making a healthy choice and a healthy living so that they, so when they're put into certain situations, whether it's a bullying situation or a peer pressure situation, they will be able to make a better and healthy choice. And I'm really proud of the program. And it's one of the, it's one of the big things that, you know, I'm trying to reach to all the community, the, thank you, the members of the community above.
So I actually believe that the school's role should be more of an extension of what we as parents teach at home. I think as parents, we need to start these sometimes tough conversations with our own children. I know for myself, I want my children to hear it from me first, and I want the support of the faculty and staff at my children's school to reinforce what I'm already teaching at home. I think community programs, like the one that Kathy has started, are crucial to the entire community, and they also offer a lot of information for our parents so that we can continue these conversations with our children outside of the school as well.
Yeah, I'll go off of what everyone's been saying, but one thing that I think a lot about is being an educator and a science teacher is a lot of these, like wellness, you know, drugs and alcohol things were in my curriculum, but a lot of things are being driven now by testing. And so one of the things that I'd like to look at, and I'd like a lot of people to look at, is not, is sort of testing that that is real testing, meaning knowing the whole picture, seeing the whole picture of what schools are doing. Because it isn't just academics. Academics are a piece of it, but all of these could be put in curriculum.
I'm gonna go off of what's been already said, but to say it's a collaborative process that it starts at home. And as parents, we need to really talk to our children. But when our children leave the house at eight o'clock in the morning and they're spending six-plus hours a day in school, it really does come down to educators also being a part of that process. And Malden does have a bullying prevention policy. And we just really need to hold our administrators to the standards that they're implementing that in the school system as well. So it's really a collaboration between parents and the school system. Thank you.
So one thing that I think we need to do is really go directly to the source. So for instance, we know that a lot of our students are online. They're on Facebook, they're on Twitter, they're on Instagram, they're on Snapchat. We've got to actually go right there and make sure that we're pulling that up in school and teaching them, this is what cyber bullying looks like in all of these aspects. And also, this is what it looks like for teachers as well, so that everyone is really on the same page about how exactly this is. And we need to adopt a see-something, say-something culture so that teachers and students are really aware of how exactly we can make sure that we're preventing this from happening.
I feel like I'm just piggybacking off everybody else, but, you know, the schools need to be, I should say, I should start off by saying that, you know, with technology becoming more and more rarely available, between cell phones, I've seen kids walking around with cell phones, and as Mekka just said, with Facebook and Instagram and Snapchat. I think these schools need to be able to introduce these policies and these, you know, the do's and do-nots, obviously, of this world. The schools should be able to reinforce what's bad about them, and they should also be able to enforce these, because again, some of these students don't have that support system at home to tell them what's right or wrong. So I think that this is crucial, and especially where we're creating the social, emotional environment. I believe this is where we'll reinforce that message for a lot of our students.
Kids are very smart, especially the younger ones. They pick up things, they pick up everything that, they feel the emotion. And it starts at the house. The parent has to be part of the child's education. And going towards the school, back and forth with a dialogue with the teachers. They can nip it in the bud in the beginning. Bullying, I mean, like they said, you got a president that's doing it. I mean, you know, you don't need that. Teachers, at least that I have seen at the BB and the Ferryway, they're very involved with the children, and they do help. So if the kids do have a problem, they can go to a teacher, and it will work out well for them. They can talk to them, and they won't hold them accountable. So it'll work out well. Thank you.
So I would now like to invite up Melissa. Melissa is a ninth grader in the Malden Public Schools to ask the next question. And her question will be directed first to Mr. Drummy.
Do you believe that subjects in school are taught at a culturally sensitive manner? Will you prioritize finding, funding, and allocating time for anti-racism and cultural competency trainings for a white majority, faculty serving in a majority of students and families of color from many different cultures?
The subjects are taught, granted, how do I put this? Culturally sensitive, I believe, they have to be. I mean, if you don't, then the students, they're gonna have a problem. They should say something. The teachers have the obligation to teach as well as they can, as best as they can. And it's intingent upon us as school committee people to help the administration expand the racial diversity that we have in this school, because we can do better. And we have to do better, because we have 70 different languages and dialects being spoken. So it has to get expanded and done quickly. So I think it can be done.
Thank you. Again, to harp, to go back to my social, emotional program that I put in. I think that this is where the social, emotional is crucial. Students need to learn from the educators, but I also think that the educators also need to learn from the students as well, too. Again, many students come from many various different backgrounds, and so don't the educators. So I think that this is where, again, the social, emotional is crucial. Also, for funding, that was one of the things I actually wanted to work on, was for a grant writer to come in and provide extra funding for our school district. Again, our educators are there to educate our students, and they shouldn't have to worry about the burden about finding different grants. And I think that's why it's so crucial in this district to have a full-time grant writer to provide and find these grants if they're out there.
I'm sad I only have one minute to talk about culturally responsive teaching, because it's literally one of my favorite things ever. But, so please find me afterwards if you want to learn more. This is actually some of the work that I currently do in terms of training principals and teachers around being culturally responsive to students, and their different learning needs and all the backgrounds that they bring. And so I think it's incredibly important that we're focusing on this. And one way that you focus on this is by throwing money behind it. I have some friends who are teachers in the Malden Public School systems, and I've heard from them that this is definitely an area of improvement. So I look forward to learning more and working with the school committee on this issue.
As we all know, that Malden is one of the most diverse cities in the Commonwealth. And that alone right there says that we need to be responsive to a culturally responsive instruction. And as everyone that has sat up here and said, put money behind it. I know that a student would more likely be open to teachers and people in school than their own parents. So to have teachers that are inclined to speak to them about things of their background and open up that dialogue, we just have to invest in it. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. We need to work on culturally sensitive training. I also think having a staff that reflects the student population is a huge, is a hu, it's something that's happening everywhere, not just in Malden. I think we need to actively recruit teachers, non-white teachers. And that's something that I know Dr. Grantson was working on last year. Another thing I just wanted to talk about, it's just that, something that teachers do. My son just came home with a lesson about skin color. And it wasn't just about what is skin color. They did something on science, melanin, how much melanin you have in your skin. And it was like a class, it was like a rainbow of colors in my son's classroom. And that just, I think that just by being in the Malden classrooms, they're picking up cultural diversity. And, but I think putting in some supports is definitely necessary for the schools.
So I certainly believe that our students are taught in a culturally sensitive manner. I don't think it's fair to assume that our faculty, regardless of race, might be culturally insensitive. As far as making funding for competency trainings a priority, I don't necessarily think it's top priority. I think our teachers and staff go through an extensive hiring process, and I believe the administration and our city officials do their very best to hire diversely qualified staff. Thank you.
Yes, I do believe that our schools are taught in a culturally, excuse me, sensitive manner. I also think that our faculty should be more diverse, absolutely. And I think, I've done a little bit of research, and they actually do have methods and tools and a lot of resources out there that show you how you can adapt a sort of the hiring process. There's different ways to do it. And also, we just need to be mindful that we are choosing the most qualified candidate as well.
Regarding cultural sensitivity within our schools, I know that's a very mixed bag from personal experience. When my son went into kindergarten, within the first month of kindergarten, he comes home and he tells me, Mom, you need to take that off your head. Or when he came home in second grade and asked me, Mom, can black people be Muslim? Or any other number of things that come out of a child's mouth that shows that they do have awareness of our differences, that shows that they do have awareness of systemic racism. And I know that's a loaded topic, but we have to confront it and be willing to admit that it exists so that we can improve the outcomes on that. So what are some innovative ways that we can address this? So what are some innovative ways that we can address this? Last year, in my son's third-grade class, Ms. McDonough had a cultural fair where each child did research on the country that there was, their cultural background. And then they brought artifacts from their countries. We, all the parents brought food. There is a way to incorporate diversity in a fun way without having it be too expensive. Thank you.
Our third question will be from Jessica, who is a parent. And that question will be first directed to Ms. Solom.
What new resources are needed to support a diverse student body? More specifically, do you support the designation of an ombudsman to whom students and families can safely report discrimination and microaggressions based on race, ethnicity, gender, religion, sexual orientation, and disability?
So we do need to make sure that our children are aware of these issues, and we need to make sure that we are supporting these outcomes. We can, you know, have clubs after school. I do know that there have been, you know, innovative ways. One was when I was in school, we had Odyssey of the Mind. We were able to bring all of the children together and show them creative ways that they could overcome different outcomes. For me, here's an example. For me, I was in Odyssey of the Mind. I grew up in a home that, like I said, was low-income. I had, you know, disabilities that we had to overcome. And what we did, it was a very fun program, and I'm so sorry. But basically, what we did was it was a fun way to show children that despite all obstacles, you can still learn. We had competitions, and it was fun.
Thank you. I would support the designation for an ombudsman. I think it would be a great idea, so long as we are fiscally sound. I think that's also important. As far as the bringing in more diversity, I know I was part of, I know the PTO at the Friary School and all the other schools, they had International Day. So all the students were, you know, they were taught all like the different, you know, the foods and the religion and the culture, and it's just, it's great. It's great to be a part of that. And you'd be surprised how much, you know, the, when you're speaking to the child, how much they can tell you about another's, you know, culture. So I think that's, that's great, and we should continue to do that more.
So I would not support using an already tight school budget to hire an ombudsman. I think that our administration is competent and sensitive enough to support any issues that may arise. Issues are always going to arise. Again, it has to start at home, and we need to use our community leaders as an extension of what we're already teaching at home. My children go to an extremely diverse school. They have friends of many different races. If you ask my children to describe their best friends, never once will they describe them using their race, ethnicity, or anything else, because that's not how we at home describe our peers or our friends. Thank you.
I think above all, in order to learn, you need to feel safe. And if you don't feel safe, there's nothing you're gonna, you're not gonna learn. My son has a quote-unquote disability. When he doesn't feel good, if he doesn't feel welcome, if he doesn't feel like there's people supporting him or people understanding him, he's not learning, bottom line. And you can't understand what someone else's feels unless you're in their body. And so we do need people, and maybe it's not this person, but we need to start to not assume that we understand how everyone feels. Thank you.
In regards to new resources, I think we could actually tap into some of the resources we already have. At the high school level, we have some great clubs, the Z Club, LGBTQ, Cultural Connections. Let's bring it down a step lower into our K-8 schools. Let's get them into clubs that align them. So when we have English language learners that are coming in, we're teaching them English, but let's not forget their culture. Let's give them those clubs so they can be with their peers and also then take that and teach others in their classroom all about themselves. So I think in regards to new resources, I think we have resources that we just have to tap into. As far as an ombudsman, great idea, given the money budget behind it, but we also have some great school adjustment counselors that can also step into that role and be there for the children. Thank you.
So I think that we do have to make decisions about how we're gonna live up to our values, and this one in particular is speaking to our value of diversity. And that's going to require some difficult choices. As elected officials, our responsibility is to be responsive to the public. So if families and students are saying, "We want this resource, we need this, this is vital for us to feel safe, for us to feel loved and accepted," then it's our responsibility to respond to that and to provide that. And again, that goes back to the value that we say that we are all aligned on. So I would definitely be in support of figuring out what type of resources we already have. There are also some local organizations, the Chinese Culture Connection, the Immigrant Learning Center, that have a lot of resources and support that they could offer us. But we've got to support them by giving them volunteers, and we also need to look creatively into what type of funding we can provide. Thank you.
I do support an ombudsman. I also do think that we have community leaders already in place in the city that should be willing to step into that role, and I think that they would be glad to step into that role. This city also has an amazing group and community and unity, too. And I think that, you know, that group does a lot of good work around the city, and I think this is crucial. Again, going back to the social-emotional aspect, I'm hoping that in the school system that this also, again, creates this environment where, again, where the educators learn from the students, and the students learn from the educators of various different backgrounds, culturally, what goes on at home, and whatnot. But I also want to talk about starting a mentorship program, too. And I think that if we start getting some of our students engaged and start to think about what careers that they want to go down, or maybe that they want to enter into, I think that what you'll see in years to come is, a lot of our, a lot of students who learned under this mentorship program will come back and help this community out by inspiring other new generations to make the same moves that they had made.
I agree that an ombudsman is needed. However, money is always tight. Granted, there, you can get grants or whatever to do it, but there's some really good teachers in all the schools, and I think you could use a teacher as a resource to handle that. If there was a problem, you could talk to the teacher, the teacher could be the go-between and then help alleviate the problem. As far as resources needed to support a diverse student body, it's a definite, you need to have it, and coming up with the funding for it, unfortunately, is always gonna, it's always gonna come down to money. And it's gonna take creative financing to do it, and that's something that we look at every Monday. Thank you.
So I would like to now challenge the audience to bring forward your questions. Before you do, I'm going to ask a follow-up question about resources. So once I do, we should have time for maybe a few questions, so please get those ready. But my follow-up question on resources is going to go first to Mr. Drummy. You've all talked about tight budgets, limited resources, areas that could be invested in. But I want to hear from you, how would you prioritize programs? What is important to you? And the follow-up question is, do you also have some innovative ideas to save money and drive outcomes? Saving money and driving outcomes.
Driving outcomes, okay. How would you do this? Again, trying to, you'd have to look at each, two years ago, I think we did it the first time, we went through the entire line item of the budget for the schools, which was never done before. And we were able to nitpick and take what we thought we could do to get away with helping out, because we had to cut $2.4 million from the budget. And then we wound up giving another million five back, which really threw us off. But it's a tough thing to do. I mean, you look at it, you try to see where it can be done. You can, you don't want to get into the classroom, you don't want to cut the classroom, but if you take away the resources of the teacher, you're hamstringing the teacher, and the teacher can't do much when they don't have the resources either. So it's, I could throw out several different things, but it's gonna include just, seriously, all of us just sitting down, looking at it, and see what we can do and how we can do it.
When it comes to what programs are important, you know, I'm only me, Emmanuel Marsh. I mean, what I may think is important, somebody else may not think is important. So I think that we need to be mindful of where we are in the budget, what we do cut, what we don't cut, because, again, when we cut something, you know, that's gonna offset somebody somewhere, and that's gonna upset somebody somewhere. And, again, what I may not think is important, somebody else may view as important. So I think, again, we have to be mindful of that, and I think that having community input, whether it's through the schools or the parents, or I should say, schools and the parents, and even hearing from the students as well, too, that's crucial when we make these decisions come spring. And I think these conversations need to be starting to have right now, as a matter of fact, so, thank you.
So something that's really important to me is making sure that all of our children are receiving an equitable education and that they have the right access to that in those programs. So then I specifically think about students who, for whom that is not true. And oftentimes, that is in particular demographics of students, for instance, students who are learning a second language, English language learners, or students who have diverse learning needs. And so I, again, as a former educator, find it incredibly important that we're thinking a lot about how to make sure that families who don't know how to always advocate for themselves are able to have just as much success as those who do. In terms of cutting things from the budget, I know I'm not a current committee member, but something that I am interested in and that I've heard a lot of parental demand for is for us to continue to talk about what it looks like to bring some more of our special education sendouts back into Malden, because I know that's a large chunk of the budget that we're spending right now. And so, again, as everyone has said, these are not easy decisions. You cannot just write them off with a stroke of a pen, but I'm looking forward to more conversations there.
So in Malden's last comprehensive district review, our two strengths were actually special education and English language learners. We're putting a lot of effort and time into ensuring that those kids are getting an equal education. That right there doesn't mean that we can't invest more. And with my passion in special education, I think we need to take a look at our out-of-district costs in sending special educating out of district, and what we can do to bring those children back in district. Can we devote more time and effort into ensuring that our educators are properly educated themselves on how to teach such a diverse set of children? So it's a strength, but we can always build upon that.
You guys stole my thunder. So I was gonna talk about, I have a very good friend who has recently, her child's been put out of, has been sent out of district, and she really wanted him to stay in the Malden community. It's just thinking outside the box and starting to think about, and I know Superintendent O'Terry did that at Somerville High, and I think that's very encouraging, because they think a lot of people want to stay with their friends and want to stay with what they know. And so they don't necessarily want to leave the district, and it is very expensive. So it's putting money ahead of, and money and time into something. So it is, it's risky. I guess what I would say is my most important thing to me, it doesn't matter. It's what's the most important to the educators and the community members, and that's why things like this are so important. And I just, I just really think that we need to also just advocate for Malden in the state and federal budgets, because they're just not paying us back.
So to kind of answer on how we could save money, I guess I'm going to answer that question with a question. How do you save money and cut corners with such a growing population? Again, going back to class size, we are busting at the seams, and it's not just in public schools. This is a city-wide issue. And I think we have to look at other schools in our city, the Charter School, Cheveris Catholic, Malden Catholic. If we didn't have these other schools for our city's children, we wouldn't be able to physically hold and educate all these children in this city. So saving money, we need more money, if you ask me. We can't save any, there's nothing to save. We're, we need more. And prioritize, I think, you know, the special education program and our ESL classes. I think we need some more, sorry, literature translations for the parents, not just the children. Again, we need to pull our parents in and give them more resources, too.
So before you cut anything, you really need to dissect everything in that budget and make sure that, before you're cutting something, how is that going to affect our educators? How is that going to affect our children? We really need to make decisions in the best interest of our children, of our educators. And, you know, we cut a $2.4 million budget. It was not easy at all. We did not cut into the classrooms, and I think we're all really proud of that. How can we get money or save money? I would start with chapter, with chapter, the chapter 70 formula. I think there's something in there, and I would start there for sure. And I think that would help us out a lot.
First, thank you for dealing with my brain malfunction earlier. It happens to the best of us, I guess, or all of us. But what I would say first and foremost is, I've taken a look at the budget. There is not much wiggle room, and I commend our school committee members for what they have done with it. So first and foremost, I would say we need to prioritize efficiency, make sure that nothing is being wasted, possibly even do periodic audits to make sure what we're using is done wisely. We also need to make sure that we invest in people. We have to make sure that our teachers and our staff are taken care of, because these are the people that we're entrusting our children to. Then we need to come up with a two-pronged approach, short-term and long-term. Short-term is community involvement, such as, you know, recently, we're doing a parent's school supply drive. We've fulfilled already 90% of the requests that have come in for the schools, for school supplies. Secondly, again, I would reiterate the chapter 70 formula, actively advocating for our children to make sure that we get the funding they need.
Okay. So I know you're ready with your questions, so don't rush up all at once. If you could raise your hand so I could see how many questions there are in the audience. Wow, okay. So because we've had such great student involvement, I am actually going to point to some of our students in the front row. If you could please ask your question, yep, our wonderful timekeeper. And this question is going to go to Ms. Solom first.
Hello, everyone. My name's Amy Bujery. I am a ninth-grade student at Malden High School. And my question is that Malden's a city with more than 70 languages and cultures. How will you engage parents and members of the community whose primary language is not English? And what type of bilingual education is available for students who have just arrived in the U.S.?
First of all, we need to make sure that we're communicating with them in their language. I do know that a few years ago, in my role as the administrator for the mosque, I was reached out to by the Parent Information Center for translational services. Unfortunately, nothing ever came of that, so we need to make sure that we're following through on those processes, making sure that when we send out the robo-calls, that perhaps we're sending them out in more than one language, perhaps targeting households instead of having a multi-language marathon, that we can have a list, and we should, of what's spoken in the home. I know I filled that out on the application, what's the main language at home. Secondly, you know, we need to make sure... Secondly, you know, we need to make sure that we're addressing English language learners on their level. Right now, I am aware that currently we have English-only instruction and we believe in an immersion program, but maybe it's time to reevaluate that situation.
I think we need to reach all the families in Malden, no matter what language they speak. We need to make sure that we're able to communicate with them. You know, some of the resources out there, you know, we do have the school department's website that can translate into your language. I know the city of Malden does have a resource link on there where you're able to type in your language, any type of question that you'd like, and it'll actually translate it in your language. So, you know, we do have those resources out there. And if there's any, if anyone needs any help, you know, we have the Department of Education right in the square, the Parent Information Center as well.
So to what I said earlier, I do think it's important to have all our information translated for our parents so that they have the information at home. However, I think that when parents come here from other countries and come to our city, they're sending their children to our public schools in an effort to have their children learn English. I work in a classroom right now where three of our students have no English, and we use resources to translate for the parents, but we are teaching them English the best way that we can, and they're learning. The children will learn.
I think this is a very big topic in Malden. I always think about this in my background as teacher in Los Angeles, and I had 98% of families at home spoke Spanish. So it was a very easy fix. You translated everything into Spanish. I think having 70-plus languages is very difficult. And how do you bridge that gap and how do you get all of the information to parents? Because I don't think they're all getting the information that they need. But I think trying to find out where the need is most and filling it, and also just talking about bilingual education, it's an amazing, just, I'm not talking about English, I'm talking about having bilingual education available to students of all, you know, English, whatever language. I would love to have a bilingual program here. I think it's a really positive step.
I think, like everybody has said across the board, we definitely need to focus on how we're communicating with parents that don't speak English, whether it's translations for our school robo-calls, flyers that are going out. We could even bring it to the level of making sure parents are included in our school committee meetings. And I don't know how we could possibly do that. Maybe it's an investment in translation headphones that those that don't speak English could at least participate in these types of meetings and be fully informed. At the same time, I think within the schools, I think it's really important that we teach our English language learners the concepts, possibly in their language first, so they grasp it, and then reinforce those concepts in the English language. But definitely in Malden with 70-plus languages, something has to be done.
I'm also a fan of making sure that we're providing information in language that people can access, because if people don't understand what's being put in front of them, then they're not going to be connected, they're not going to be engaged. And I think that, you know, this is an opportunity, one of my colleagues up here was talking about how many universities and colleges we have in the area. There are tons of programs and colleges and universities with very fat private endowments that we could definitely tap into as we think about translation services and bridging that gap around communication with our families. There's also some studies that show that when students are learning in their native language, they really thrive and learn at a faster rate than if they're in emergent settings. And so I think those are all really important research statistics that we need to address.
The beauty of living in this city is that we have over 70 languages spoken, and that we have such a diverse community that we actually have people, again, going back to the community leaders, that can actually interpret, whether it be on flyers, whether it be on a connect ed phone call or the reverse 911, going out to the parents' households. One group that I tried to work with, or I worked on, I should say, with the superintendent and a few other people, was a family and community engagement piece, where it was trying to bring in families from around the district. And so I think moving forward, trying to strengthen that so that our parents who do, or I should say, our families who do speak, you know, many different languages still have a place, and getting translators in place for them to take part in the family and community engagement. And with the bilingual, for our students, or programs, I should say, for our students, is how do we make sure that not only are our students learning English, but, you know, they also are learning various languages as well, too? And something I don't want to see is them lose their native tongue while trying to learn a new language.
You definitely need to have translators if you've got 70 different languages. The teachers try to do the best they can within the schools, and there's also a program out there, I believe Pat Fish runs it, that's Title I, that helps the parents as English language learners. And in some cases, they actually use some of their students to help them translate with them, so it does work out pretty well. But that can be expanded, and again, that's federally funded, so again, it all falls back to money, and it's like a broken record every time I say it, but you just had a, the state just gave themselves a raise of, I don't know how many millions of dollars, but we only got a 3% increase over last year's budget. There's a disparity there. So I would say, get on your local state rep, your senator, there is money available, it can be done, and we can expand what's already started. It's not very expanded, but it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Great. Our next question will come from one of our Malden High School students, and it will be addressed to Mr. Drummy.
Hello, my name's Olivia Santangelo, and I'm a sophomore at Malden High School. And my question is, given that students have different abilities, how can you make gifted education available in K-38 schools?
Excuse me, can you just do that one more time, because I'm going deaf. Can you just read that for me one more time? I'm sorry.
Given that students have different abilities, how can you make gifted education available in K-38 schools?
As far as the gifted go, I believe there's a gifted program over at the STEAM Academy, which they have, and it works sort of kind of fairly well. I know at one point, one of our other colleagues was thinking of expanding a second school to be a gifted school and another STEAM Academy. And that's a topic that we can look at and discuss, and again, anything to help the student we can do. And it's possible, but again, broken record, funding, so do the best we can.
That's a pretty good question. Again, I'm going to sound like a broken record as well, too, which is going back to the social-emotional learning. I think, again, I think we're just creating that environment for students that do learn on all different, on all different levels, again, understand each other and how they are learning. I think, again, that's crucial. And I guess looking at ways to, you know, to make sure that whatever you learn at the BB, you're learning the same thing at the Linden, so I guess equity across the board. And again, just trying to make sure that our students are well-equipped, you know, throughout the district.
I really love this question, because I feel like it's not talked about enough. When I was in elementary school, I was actually able to participate in a gifted program, and I do feel like it set me off on a different trajectory, so I really appreciate this. This feels very personal to me. I think one of the things that we just have to make sure is that we are looking at what's working, like you want to build off of the strengths of current programs, and also look ahead and say, okay, so what exactly would our program need to look like? And we've got to figure out from that research and from that data what the program is going to be and what are the components are, so that we can be really thoughtful about the funding question. And I think that we definitely should look into bringing gifted programs across all of our schools, if possible, because we have brilliant students of all learning abilities in all of our schools, and we should be able to give them a chance to participate in that type of program.
So I think this could be made a priority, because I'm going to say, hey, I'm Jen. I'm a parent that lives on the west end of the city, and I have a gifted child. But I also have a special needs child that's in this particular school, so I can't move one child out of this school and separate him from his sibling. Not only that, but I'm a working parent. I now have to juggle two different schools, two different pickup times. So having a program like that in all of our schools would only benefit our parents to be able to actually support their children and make sure that they're able to support all of their children. Not only that, but when you have different learning structures amongst schools, it just creates inequalities amongst the teaching methods, so.
This is a really good question. It goes back to the equity across the K-8s. My daughter is in the accelerated program, it's not called the gifted program, and my son is not, although my son is IQ-wise gifted. But what is the problem really is that it's not a program that has been, it needs to be researched more, and it needs to be truly taught as a program that is equally, that you can get into equally from anywhere and no matter what your learning style is, because right now, I think it's more of an accelerated program, meaning it's, the kids aren't necessarily gifted in it, there's no testing into it, there's an application, I believe, but I think it's definitely something that we need to look at and offer across the K-8s to make it equitable to everyone.
So to piggyback on what everyone else is saying, we would definitely need equity through all schools, but we also need support for our teachers. Our teachers have really big workloads and really diverse, not just in terms of race, but in terms of learning styles in their classroom. We need to support our teachers before a program like this in all schools can be successful.
We need to have equity in all schools, but we must make sure that we are fiscally sound to do that. As the liaison for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, they are a great resource. And also, we do have the IEP, excuse me, I can't speak right now, IEP programs as well. And we should have the gifted program in all schools, so long, again, as that is fiscally sound.
I think this is a perfect time to highlight that we have Harvard, we have MIT, and we've got all these other great institutions around us, that, yes, I believe that children who learn at an accelerated pace, they need to be accommodated in all of our schools. And these are children who have an innate love of learning, and we need to be encouraging that. And I love some of the things that I've seen around in researching this issue. In some of the Nordic countries, they have a LARPing high school at the Sound of Sounding Extra Nerdy, that's live-action role-playing, but they learn so many skills from it, and they get involved in the learning. So there are ways to do this in a fiscally sound way, we just need to be willing to put in the work and research it and form those connections.
Do we have any other students with questions? Yes, our sixth grader.
What is it?
If it's okay, I'd like to, I was asking the students to go first.
Oh, go. Hi, my name's Hassan. I wanted to ask you, do you believe you can help reinstate bus transportation, particularly to accommodate working families?
You know, that is a difficult question, as so many of my fellow candidates and seated committee members already have said, funding is very tight, and unfortunately, transportation was one of the easier things to cut rather than teachers and staffing levels. So what I would say in response to that, really, the situation is making sure that all of our schools are teaching in an equitable manner, that a child at Ferryway receives the same instruction and opportunities and programs as a child over at the Forestale. And we also need to make sure that, before we had an open district, I have received so many complaints from parents that they would like to move their children to the school that's close to them because the transportation's been cut, but they can't because the schools are full. So we need to look at this problem more.
I know the transportation was cut. It's definitely not something that I voted on. I voted against cutting the transportation. I do think that we could definitely work with the superintendent, as well as the school department, to try to maybe figure out a way in how we could be able to bring something back to get those children to their schools. Again, that's looking at the budget and seeing if we can, you know, add that in.
So seeing as it was already cut, I'm going to have to do some serious homework for you and figure out, is there a way to bring this back? And I think we'd have to bring it back slowly. I'm sure it wouldn't be across the city right away, just because of cost. So I'm going to just say, I'm going to do my homework on that for you.
It was unfortunate that it was cut. The thing that I go back to is that if we did provide a gifted program at every school, then this probably wouldn't have been a problem. There were a lot of students in the busing that their busing was cut, but they wanted to stay at, say, the Linden, because they had the gifted program there. So they did offer everyone transfer back to the home school if they wanted to. But again, if you don't offer everything, then you need to offer transportation.
So can we bring back transportation? I don't have that answer for you. Unfortunately, we are dealing with overcrowding in schools right now, and based on that, even if you chose a school in proximity, that school is filled to the hill right now, and you could be living close to BB but going to Salemwood. So we really need to look at the overcrowding in the schools and tackle that, so transportation isn't as muchly needed. But can we bring it back? I don't know. That's not a question I can answer for you today. I'd love to, but overcrowding, I think, is a topic we need to really dive deeper into.
I think I echo a lot of the comments of some of my colleagues here. I'm definitely open to looking at options and seeing what the research is. It does sound, you know, like a very difficult task, but it's our job to be up to that challenge. And I also echo the thoughts about figuring out what the root cause is, why a lot of families were looking to leave some schools and go to others. And that does seem like something that's definitely well within the purview of the school committee to address.
All right. What I can tell you is that I would want to work tirelessly to bring a grant rider. Again, like I've hopped on already about that, that I want to bring back a grant rider to actually find, if there are funds out there, or if there are grants for busing. Another idea, too, that, I don't know, I mean, we'd have to work with the parents, but maybe trying to work with the MBTA and trying to start a community partnership. I know that some parents wouldn't really trust their children being on the bus, because, you know, there's all strangers, but I think that if we try to work with the MBTA officials and the parents and the community as a whole, I think that if we were to go that route, maybe that would be a safe way to do it. But at this time right now, all I can tell you is that I will work tirelessly to try to bring on a grant rider and try to tirelessly work to try to find grants, such as transportation, to help this district.
That was really our first taste of budgeting, was getting rid of $400,000 without cutting into a classroom. And transportation is tough. I mean, it's, back in my day, you could walk to school, everything was hunky-dory, it's a different, it's a different time out there. Out of the 400,000, there was only 109 children taking the buses. In some cases, buses only had one child. We had a fiduciary responsibility to cut the budget without going in, so we did the best we could of what we got. Again, like Emmanuel said, looking at grants, there might be something out there, maybe a transfer program with the teachers, but it's going to be... transfer program with the teachers, but it's going to be -- it's going to be tough. It's not there. It can be looked at, but I don't really see it coming back unless there's a big infusion of cash. Thank you.
Great. So at this time, I'd like to ask the gentleman from the third row if he'd like to come up and ask your question. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening. Thank you. And thank you, guys, for being here. I think this is the theme that I've heard here all night, that Malden has 70 different languages, the staff -- but this is the most diverse school district in the Commonwealth, yet our staff, our teachers, our administrators does not reflect that. So my question to all of you tonight is, if elected or reelected, what would you do to hire more Black teachers, more Black guidance counselors, Asian teachers, Hispanic teachers, and so on? Thank you.
Mr. Drummy, you're going to go first.
Teddy and I have had this conversation before, and it does need to be more diversity in what's going on with the teachers. Again, the principals are the ones that hire their staff. The school committee hires the superintendent. We okay the assistant superintendents, and then the schools are given their autonomy to hire who they want. I've told Teddy, and we talked about it, that really, make a play. Come to the school, come to a meeting for the rest of the year when you got a new school committee and make a presentation. And that will put a bug in the air that something needs to be done. We've got a new superintendent who came from a -- just a diverse -- as a diverse district as we have, and they do have a better spread of teachers as far as race and what have you out there to help the students achieve what they want to do. So it can be done. It will take time, but Teddy, you're on the right track. Come to the school committee meeting, man. Make the presentation. It'll work.
All right. So I think I've actually had this conversation with Teddy, too, a few times as well. But I think that it is, you know, I think it's up to this district, to the superintendents. Maybe it's up to us, the school committee members, too, to actively start recruiting, to actively go onto college campuses and start going to the Salem States, the UMass Boston's, to start actively saying, hey, why don't you come work here? Again, I talked about the mentorship program also, too, and I think that's also something that we need to start thinking about in this city. I, you know, when you're a teenager, you know, you want to be a millionaire, obviously. You know, you think about getting into that career where, you know, you want to be a millionaire. But in the reality of it, though, is we need to start having these conversations with our students at an earlier age, maybe in freshman year, maybe in sophomore year, but maybe have them start to think about how maybe they want to go into an education, maybe they want to be an administrator, maybe they want to be sitting here on the school committee. But we need to start having -- we need to start doing these programs, because again, like I had said earlier, if you start doing this now, you will see a lot of these students return back to the same district that gave them that opportunity to move forward, to come back and actually help the future generations.
I firmly believe in the importance of representation in our schools so that our students can have people who they feel that they can connect to on a variety of levels. And I think for many of our children, it's important that they are able to connect with the adults that are in the spaces that they're learning from. I think as a school committee, we can work with the superintendent to really involve ourselves in supporting our principals to be trained in what it looks like to attract a diverse set of educators. Again, I believe that there are tons of colleges and universities that we can tap into and form formal partnerships with when we think about creating a pipeline of educators who better reflect the diversity of our students.
I think Emmanuel actually had really hit it on the head. Malden being so diverse as it is, when we have kids that are at the high school level that are starting to look at their future and plan their careers, why aren't we not offering some sort of incentive to come back to the city and the school system that raised you and be a part of that process? I don't know what that incentive could be to bring them in. It's something that definitely should be looked at at a higher governmental level. But I think with those 70 languages that we've all been talking about tonight, that this is our job pool right here. So let's do what we say we're going to do and educate them to the best of our ability and bring them back home.
It's all good points. I think one thing that we haven't talked about is my -- a family member of mine works at an education school around here, one of these think tanks, and it's actually pay that is an incentive to a lot of these teachers. So if we pay more or if we -- and also with recruiting and then looking at high school. But I think if you actively recruit and your teachers actually get paid what they're worth, but I don't even want to start with that one.
So like everyone is saying, it sounds really great to bring our own students back to their community. But to go off of what Michael was saying, it's in the hands of each school's administration. So are there diverse candidates even applying for these positions? I don't think it's right to assume that certain people are being overlooked, possibly because of race, and I think we always want top quality and the most qualified. But again, we have to see who's even applying for these positions. How diverse is the pool of applicants?
When I was the chair of the superintendent search, almost every single candidate had talked about this, and they said that they would work towards more diversity in our faculty in our schools. And it is very important that we do have that. And I would love to work with the superintendent, our school district, our colleagues, to try to figure out the resources and materials that we need to -- maybe we need to look at the hiring process. There is information out there, because I've researched this, and I would be definitely on board with implementing the -- implementing those tools and resources that are out there into our hiring process.
You know, as Mr. Drummy stated, the school committee really doesn't have much say in the hiring practices of the various schools. But guess what? They do have a say in the budget. So maybe we could work on incentives such as if we meet such a goal of hiring X amount of new diverse teachers this year, then we can make sure that the, you know, administrators get a bonus of some sort. You know, I don't know exactly how we can do this, but there are ways. We need to, you know, dangle a little carrot in front if we need to, or maybe use a little bit of stick, but, you know, that's what we got to do. And the system, unfortunately, is set up. To say that we don't have diverse candidates applying for these positions, we know they are, and we know the system, unfortunately, has been set up to where they're just not showing up. They're not getting hired. We need to look at these reasons why.
So the conversations tonight are important, and they are continuous. And I know that there are a lot of questions from the audience. So what I would like to do, just giving the candidates some notice, is I would like the questions to be asked. So if you have questions, I would like for you to come up to the podium to ask your question. And I'm going to ask the candidates to take it upon yourself to find ways to answer the questions. You will be given one last, one-minute final reflection where you can either answer one of the questions, reflect upon the night as a whole, but also take it upon yourselves to reach out to the people asking the questions and get those answered. Sound good? All right. So if you have questions, please step up and one at a time, ask your question.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Scarver, and I reside in Ward Four. I do want to point out, since this is a public forum, that I would have loved to have seen my school committee member in Ward Four here at this public space. But we can move on to my question. So I do want to disabuse this notion that diversity and quality are separate. I just want to call that out as well. As a man of color -- [applause] -- as a man of color who works at Harvard University doing education policy, I find it really frustrating when elected leaders basically don't do their job and read up on things that are directly related to the services that they're implementing. So again, want to call that out as well. So the -- so back to my question. The Every Student Succeeds Act was recently, you know, implemented, and it was a bipartisan effort that came about at the end of 2015. If you all don't know, Secretary Betsy DeVos recently approved a Massachusetts waiver, and in it, it had granted school districts and low-performing schools the autonomy they needed to address the needs of students. So my question is, as a school committee member, how do you plan on creating supports, programs, interventions that are evidence-based and really address the root cause of why we are seeing a disconnect between the fiscal priorities within the Malden Public Schools' budget and the services that are being rendered to students? Thank you.
Okay, it's going to be a hard one to follow. I apologize. My name's Anna Jeffrey. I live in Ward Five. Happy to see my school committee member here. I am a product of public schools, like many of you, but, you know, I'm a Malden reticent, and I'm very upset that every time I see Malden mentioned in the national news, it is because our charter school has done something terrible and racist. So I'd like to know where all of you -- I'd really like to know where all of you stand on the issue of charter schools in general and the charter school that we have right now. I know you're not all going to answer that today, but I would love for you to go on social media or other places and let everybody know. Thank you.
My name's Jason Law, and I retired from MBTA. I think I deal with the public and the high school student more than anybody else. 1986, I was driving the bus at Malden, and then I was working on training. Every single day, I deal with high school. But I don't understand. When they're in ninth grade, they're not students, they're not children no more. They're teenagers. So in order to train a teenager to write track, they should bring a ROTC in, like Quincy. That's how my son started. Ninth grade, 10, 11, 12. Training him how to respect people, self-discipline, and another thing is, you know, how to control themselves. That's how the ROTC trained him. When he graduate high school, it's a career right there for him. He can go in the Army, Air Force. My son's a Marine, five years now. He's happy. Okay? He do something for the country. And that's why I request the board consider to bring the ROTC in Malden. Okay? Because Quincy has it for a long, long time. And, you know, train the kid how to respect. And, you know, I deal with them a lot. I know exactly what's going on. Okay? To climb the job and then save a lot of money for the city. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll take the last two questions.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nikita Lamore. I'm in Ward Five, and I'm happy to see my school rep in the podium. I came with a question. I mean, I came here, I wanted to question about the diversity, but I wanted to use the phrase, it takes a village to raise a child. So I wanted to ask how you're going to apply this African proverb, how you're going to get the village, you know, given that we've heard it many times, that we speak like 70 languages. But I think that question had been answered. But as I'm listening to the budget issue, so I want to propose, I want to ask, how have you ever thought of using of Malden, of using the participatory budget? Because the number of cities and towns are using participatory budget, meaning like the community, the people, the voters, they come and participate in the budget process. So how can the future school committee use that participatory budget so to receive ideas on how to apply those propositions that have been made, how to get new teachers, how to post the jobs, so everybody will know that those jobs are open? So my question is, and I'm saying that, how do we plan to use the participatory budget process so we can apply those ideas that were echoed throughout the night? That's all.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for running for office and for being civically engaged. I'm Jen Hendry-Lapan. I live in Ward Four. And let me see, I'll try to phrase this in a way that doesn't turn anybody off. I've been living in Malden as long as my kids have been alive, so they've been Maldonians since they were here. So I've been here about 13 years. And when I discuss issues that are of importance to me, oftentimes, if the person I'm talking with doesn't agree with me but has lived here longer, they seem to think that makes them very entitled to be right on their view and that it devalues my view. For example, a person will literally say in answer to a question I ask, I don't know how long you've lived here. It's super annoying. Now, we talked a lot today about diversity, and we always do, and I noticed a couple of things happening that I often notice and that bother me, and I want to know what you make of them, right? And it's sort of along this topic of who's really Maldonian, who is from where, right? Why is it, at least this is how it strikes me, that bringing diversity to the faculty and staff at the schools, topics like that, sort of seem to be something that people expect residents of color to bring up to committee member Marsh? This is really important to me, too. Obviously, I am white, but my kids aren't here, so you can't see, but they are white also. And I want them to have teachers that are diverse. I want them to have leadership that is diverse. They look around at their classmates, who are very diverse, and I love it. They're so comfortable together. They don't have neurotic hangups, like people that grow up in a completely homogeneous area. But then they look at their leadership, and the leadership just looks like them. What are they learning from that? What do you make of this? And just a quick final thing that goes hand in hand with this. I was here throughout the superintendent search committee stuff last year. I was watching very closely. Some of you know that. And there were quite a few comments, and I heard a couple tonight, too, about, you know, we want the best candidates. Of course we do. And that's often said in the context of some sort of answer to why maybe there's not more diversity. Not to blame the diversity or anything like that, it's just like, well, we need the best candidates, right? I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous of losing my train of thought, but I don't know, I don't think I can be able to finish that one because I totally lost my train of thought.
So I'm going to ask you if you have a question there versus a train of thought.
What do you make of this issue of treating diversity like it's important, but it's sort of more important to people who are members of minority? And I did just remember it. I want to point out that a lot of the best academic achievements that are happening right now, I believe all four of the kids from Linden who advanced to the state finals of the science fair this past year, like 2017 spring, all of them are kids who are first-generation American, so obviously, all of their parents are not Maldonian. If people who have been in Malden their whole lives want to love the newcomers, like me, whether or not we're from America, and want to view our diversity as a strength, then, you know, acknowledge also that new people are bringing a lot of talent and strength here. And it's not like some shoe-in that just because someone's been from Malden that it means anything in particular. But if you are going to use arguments like, I've been in, I've always been a lifelong Maldonian, then that's saying it's okay to use a demographic argument for a candidacy. And so then it should also be okay to say like, hey, so many kids in this school district are diverse, and I'm diverse, too, if I were. And so that should be an acceptable credential for a candidate. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Well, that was a lot to think about. And just, I just have to say, I'm very excited. It's amazing. These questions, I think, are, like I said, they're ongoing, so now it's up to you. I'm going to begin with you, Ms. Massalem, for your final 60 seconds.
I would say all of these are excellent things to hear, and show that we have amazing people living here in Malden. And one thing that I feel that, not just here in Malden, but is an issue nationally, is this question of who belongs, and how do we find our own selves, our individuality, in this ever-shifting diversity that we see happening around us? There's a lot of changes, but one thing that we can be proud of is that we are a country that has advanced by embracing different cultural heritages, that many of our entrepreneurs, many of our scientific breakthroughs have come by embracing those differences and working together for a common goal, the goal of our communities, the goal of our children's future. That's what it comes down to right now. And our children need to see people who look like themselves, people who look like someone else, we need that diversity, that's what makes us strong, and let's do this together.
Those were amazing questions, and they're absolutely 100% very, very important. I know I only have 60 seconds, so I can't answer all the questions, but I do think that everything is important, we talked about charter schools, the ROTC program diversity, ways that we're measuring a child, and the participatory budget process, so, I mean, I can speak to anyone regarding any one of these, these questions, you know, after this meeting. So as far as the participatory budget process, I think that one is a good one, because it could help all other aspects. And I think that it's important, because we need the community to be involved with this. And I know that the budget, whenever they have like the budget meetings, we invite the community to come in, to address your concern, to address any questions that you have, it's open to the public. So it's very, very important that we have community involvement, we want community involvement, and we want your voice to be heard, so that we could advocate for you. Thank you.
So again, lots of really good questions. Diversity definitely being the hot topic, I heard a lot about the charter school. I think you'll have issues regarding diversity in any school, and I think to pinpoint, one is a little bit unfair, and two, maybe shame parents who choose that school over other schools is also unfair. And again, the community participation, I understand there's not a huge diverse faculty and staff in our public schools. How can we bring them in in other ways? How can we bring strong black men like Teddy, strong black women, our Asian community? How can we bring them in to service our youngsters? Can we do it through the teen center? Can we do it in after-school programs, coaching different teams? I think that there's a lot of ways to diversify staff, other than just teaching.
I just want to thank everyone for coming. I think a main thing to think about is that it, like Jen and I have talked a lot, a lot of people out there, and I have talked, I think it's the dialogue, I think it's making sure that you keep in touch with people, and, and yes, I mean, I think that, I'm very disturbed that there's, that people are making an equation between someone's, someone's culture, someone's race, and their qualifications, that's just not even in the equation for someone like myself, or thinking about, but I don't think that that's, I think we need to have more cultural training around a lot of things, as you can see tonight. You're white, you're black, you're Asian, Latino, there's many different cultures that we need to embrace here, and I think we need to, to stop being so defensive, and so, and also, some people just need to just listen, that's, I mean, that's bottom line for me, is just listen.
I'd love to tackle all of these, these questions, because I have an answer for every single one of them, so please approach me if I don't get to your question. But I'm going to tackle the charter school question, because back in November, I voted no on charter school expansion. I believe that there is flaws in the funding method. I believe that if we're going to call it a public school, it should be governed by the public, a school committee, not a private board. And to be honest with you, as a biracial woman, growing up, I was told my hair was too curly, so I started straightening it. Well, I'm not telling that to my kids, and I refuse to allow that to come into the school system, where kids can't be their own individual person.
So, lots going on here. No one has talked about the first question, the Betsy DeVos one. Why would we want to talk about her? Okay, that's why. Well, really quickly, I think that if we look at facts, these are some facts, right? Like, we're a Level III school, and we know that looking at, that our gaps are in our special education population, our English language learner population, our students are economically disadvantaged. And so if we're going to be making plans, we can't just go for the floor that they're trying to set, we got to reach the ceiling. And so we've got to be student-driven by way of data, and look very clearly at what our facts are showing us, and that all of our students are not being served equitably. I think that a lot of that does actually, and can be found in that participatory budget proposal and suggestion, because we definitely need to be a lot more open with how those decisions are being made, and bring folks in. It's a hard process, if people want to be involved in the hard process, then let's roll up our sleeves and get to work. I'm excited to do that as well. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try to tackle these as quickly as I can, so, well, I should say with the, with the time that I'm allowed. But I think that these conversations need to be on all levels. It's, these are not going to be easy conversations, especially when it comes to talking about, you know, the support and evidence-based and disconnection between student services. I think that our local elected officials need to hold office hours, I think you need to hold your school committee rep, and your city councils, and your councils at large, and your mayor, to have open office hours. Also, just like Jen, I also worked on the No One Two campaign, and I also voted No One Two, because I didn't believe that this was a fair and equal process. I think that we need to have more at the state level, I'm going to run out of time, you guys keep clapping. I think that we need to put pressure, and I think that we need to have more of an equitable function at the state level, and I think that we need to revisit the differences between the charter schools and the public schools, because when charter schools were first founded, they were supposed to be the innovative schools for the public school district, and so I think that we need to work on that. Going to the ROTC, oh, I'm out of time, but I'm going to leave with this one. These tough conversations about diversity, these need to be started now. We can't shy away from these conversations, they need to happen now in this community. Thank you.
Thanks. Malden is a very diverse city, that's been established, we know that. Thank you, Jason, I didn't realize that Rotse wasn't around anymore, I thought it was still here. We need to, we need to expand, we need to bring in, we need to bring in teachers that can relate to the children on their level, on their nationality, and it makes it easier for them to learn. I'm not going to get into the charter school, that's a different animal altogether. I voted no. 1,400 students go to the charter school, we have 67, give or take, and there's 400 that go to the Volk, that's 7,500 students. This city can't support 7,500 students, we don't have, we don't have the room for them. You think classroom size is small, big now, it's not going to get any smaller. You're averaging 20 to 22 students, it's going to stay that way. Unless the mayor has a bucket of money someplace, and we're getting another school, it's not going to happen. So, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. Get out November 7th. Thank you.
So I'd like the community and the candidates to have a last word, so I'll just say, thank you, good night, and go vote.
And on behalf of the organizers of tonight's event, we'd like to thank the candidates for coming, and thank the community for coming, and to thank our moderator, Ms. Lisa Wong. And, yes, please clap. And just a reminder for the candidates and the volunteers to stay to take a group photo. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, can you just wait one moment? I was asked actually to come up here, hi, I'm Karen Cologne Hayes, I am the Human Services and Community Outreach Manager for the City of Malden, and I actually, just because of this topic that has come up so much tonight, was asked to come up and let you know, and personally invite you all to the, we are holding a Undoing Racism Seminar and Class. Let me just read, I actually want to read this, and I want everybody to hear what it is, because it's very important, and I would like to, again, really stress that you all go to this. It is the Undoing Racism Community Organizing Workshop. So what you'll learn is, you'll, you'll learn to develop a common definition of racism, and how that affects us individually, institutionally, and linguistically, and culturally, develop and understand one's own connection to institutional racism, understand the historical context, understand how all of us, including white people, are adversely impacted by racism every day, everywhere. You'll develop an awareness and understanding about ways to begin undoing racism, and gain knowledge about how to be more effective in the work you do with your constituencies, your organizations, your communities, and your families, and understand the role of community organizing and building effective coalitions and means for undoing racism. And that is this October 12, it's actually the 11th and 12th, and we have flyers, and they'll be outside, and please pick them up, and please strongly consider going to this course. I think that that really came out tonight, and I think it's something that you should all very strongly consider coming to. Thank you.